Good evening. We will call the City Council Committee of the Hall for, of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two to order, and the clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal is absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
A present.
All right, thank you. We don't have any public comment, I don't believe.
No.
This evening, under public forum, I had chatted with Chief Shadle, and I know this is Crash Responder Safety Week of November fourteenth through the eighteenth, so Chief, I know you wanted to talk about that, so floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this week is Crash Responder Safety Week. The International Association of Firefighters and the U.S. Federal Highway Administration have declared this week Crash Safety Responder Week. On any given day in the United States, fifty thousand first responders, that's police, fire, EMTs, tow truck drivers, are working on the roadside to save lives and restore travel after traffic accidents, and almost each week, a first responder is killed. So let's all remember, all of us in the community as well, remember to slow down and move over for emergency lights. As first responders, we have your back, so please watch ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, number one, building, planning, zoning unfinished business, we have none. Under two, building, planning, zoning new business, we have the building department update with Kip Countryman. Kip, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of October, we issued one hundred and two permits for a value of construction just over four million dollars. Sixteen of those were commercial industrial, eighty-six were residential. We issued ten single-family homes, some projects under construction, have two projects for General Mills, one's at Footings, one's at Foundation, hopefully DeKetch on North State. They're looking for finals pretty quick. Speed Trek is under review, set to do foundations next week. We have numerous parking lots around town that are being paved at this time, torn out, being paved. Crusader Clinic is about finalized, Walmart's about finalized, Chapco's doing mechanicals inside, and we have Submittals for Anytime Fitness, which is going in, South Town Development, and I'll entertain, sorry, property maintenance. We've closed twenty-four cases, we have eight open, and three in court. I'll entertain. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Countryman? All right. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Under Planning, Zoning Department Update, Gina? Good evening.
There's, we had one case have public hearing last week that'll be before you next Monday. It is for a microbrewery downtown, so something new for town, excited about that. They are Boone County residents, so it'll be a local business. I have two cases for the December public hearing, a variance in a special use regarding the old DMV property, and I have been in communication this week with applicants that are hopefully, will have public hearings in January. Just, as Kip said, lots of site plan reviews going on for the permits, zoning verification letters are starting to slow down a little bit. Historic Preservation had the awards program, the residents that were awarded stuff were very honored by that, and one of them actually expressed interest in participating in any future land bank properties that could be ready to be flipped, so that was nice to hear. Hometown Christmas is, I don't want to jinx it, but it's going pretty well for planning. We did get our hometown Christmas tree family assigned to us the other day, so if anyone wants to donate gifts for our family, just let me know, and I can get you the details. Otherwise, just been very busy with lots of emails, lots of phone calls with potential developers. We'll see which ones end up panning out, and also staff did the downtown trick-or-treat on behalf of City Hall, and there was about five thousand people downtown. It was quite an event, so, and a lot of people were happy to see the city participate in
Any questions for Ms. Delrose? All right. Thank you, Gina. Item three, Public Works Unfinished Business, we have none. Public Works New Business, Public Works Update, Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our MFT overlays and pavement striping work has been completed. Logan Avenue work continues. The paving, mainline paving on Logan Avenue has been completed, as well as the pavement striping there as well. I believe all of the side streets and everything have been paved. In addition, I think there may be a couple driveways left yet to be done. Looks like the weather's not going to cooperate as nicely as it has in the recent past going forward, so there may be some finished work. I know punchless items will be remaining until springtime to get finished up, but the majority of work, construction, will be completed yet this season. Our mass signal, traffic signal mast arms at East Avenue are still scheduled to be delivered sometime in December, so they, once ComEd gets the power reestablished to that intersection, those lights will be on flash until the signal arms can come in, and once that comes in, then we can get that buttoned up as well, so. And course, leaf collection continues.
Any questions for Brent regarding any of the update information? All right, and then Brent, the water model update for Tollway South?
Memo on your packets. With the General Mills project underway, we have been receiving multiple inquiries regarding development potential along and south of Interstate ninety. Our existing water model does not extend south past the Tollway. In order to facilitate the orderly expansion of our water system in that area, the model needs to be updated to provide the framework for main extension sizing, well supply, and water storage needs based on our existing land use plans. Proposal we have received from Strand and Associates to update the water model of this area is attached. We would recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred dollars for the southeast side water model update. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one, five, eight, ten, sixty, forty. And again, Strand and Associates is a keeper of our existing water model.
Okay. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that plan and the motion we have on how to accomplish that? Alderman Snow?
So something like, some study like this would tell us whether or not we need to put a well potentially in on that side to help facilitate? Is that part of the deal?
Yes, that's the benefit of having the model, they can actually plug in the usages based on the land use and the acreages available for development, and what we, what the trends are, we're seeing for the types of development, and put all those scenarios in to come up with, again, how much water are you going to need, how many wells, how many towers you're going to need, the whole works, and the sizing and the variations thereof. It's a pretty intricate, it's a real nice tool to have at our disposal. We use it quite a bit, and continue to use it and maintain it as well, so. Just as an example, we've put in our long-range plan, long-range, short-range plan for water service to the Genoa Road Interchange, as well as water service for the Irene Road Interchange. Both of those are in the five to seven million dollars expense for each one to get that work done, so. The first step in that process, of course, is to get the model to tell us exactly how we need to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, or all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item five, under other, we have the ambulance service, which I'm going to ask Attorney Drell to make some comments on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off the show a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to the chief for a little bit, and we'll try and wrap it all up. As you all know, we've talked about this briefly before, historically, our ambulance service in Belvidere, and actually Fire Protection District Two as well, has been provided by OSF Lifeline, and that was pursuant to an agreement we had with them, by which they guaranteed ambulance service within the community basically continuous. When an ambulance went out, they'd backfill that ambulance, was the ambulance available? And that was at no charge of the city, which is extraordinary. I had never seen that. We had the best of both worlds because we had good ambulance service, we had two paramec engines responding to every call, and it was out any taxpayer subsidy whatsoever. Needless to say, we always knew they were losing money, and they did it, one, because they're a nonprofit helping the community, and two, they had a local hospital as well. As you also know, they have sold their ambulance company, OSF Lifeline, to Elite, as now known as Elite Lifeline. As part of that sale, before they consummated the sale, OSF sent us a notice of termination of the agreement that we had with them, which was due to expire anyway on April thirtieth, twenty-three. We had to renegotiate with them anyway. So we have ambulance service until April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Elite Lifeline Ambulance Service is providing the service under the terms of the old agreement at no cost to the city. However, on April thirtieth, that will all change. So it's essential at this point that we get a feeling of how best to provide ambulance service to the community. And there's really, I'll call it, three or four options, but one of them's not a very good option. Before I get to that, though, I think it's important that Chief Shale give you an idea of what he thinks the needs of our community are as far as ambulance service goes, because obviously, one of the, one of the options is do nothing. You know, that's always an option, that's a very good option, because if you don't have an ambulance company under contract, that means that the nine-one-one center's got to start calling private ambulance companies when there's an emergency, and hopefully somebody shows up relatively quickly, and you have no control over billing that either, so. That option's not great, but to get an idea of what we're looking at, what we've had in the past, Chief Shale can give you an idea of what kind of needs our community has.
Chief?
Yes, sir, thank you. So when determining the needs for the ambulance in the community, I look at the service right now, and what we have right now is we have a north ambulance stationed at the District Two Fire Station, and then one off of Logan Avenue. Now technically, we've contracted with Lifeline for one ambulance that's automatically backfilled, but practically, District Two has done the same, and depending on where the call is, that's which ambulance will provide. So technically, we have contracted one, but we're utilizing two, and then both those ambulances are backfilled. For example, on the north side of town, if an ambulance call comes in, District Two's ambulance will respond, and then Lifeline will backfill that ambulance. Alternatively, on south side of town, or I ninety, if District Two gets a call down there that needs one or two ambulances, our ambulance is going to leave here and go and take care of their, their call. So how often do we have ambulance calls? Well, in twenty twenty-one, City of Belvidere responded to two thousand four hundred and eight EMS calls, so District Two has about six hundred calls. So you say, well, it's pretty difficult to ascertain since they were being backfilled like that, well, how many dedicated ambulances will we need? Not all service providers obviously have a pool of ambulances in Rockford and are willing to do that. The other thing about the ambulances is sometimes they would leave to do a transport from the nursing home to the hospital, but it wasn't a problem because they would backfill that, so. How many ambulances would we need just to maintain the current services that we have? And one thing that I'd like to mention to everybody is the most time-consuming part of an ambulance call is the transport. So it's the transport, and then you, they have to be received into the hospital, they have to, care has to be officially transferred. There's a legal obligation that you can't just leave a patient, it's called abandonment, and it's malpractice, so they have to receive the patient, the report has to be given to the nurse, and then also, the report has to be completed at the hospital, and those reports take thirty to forty-five minutes, so if an ambulance is providing service in Belvidere, it's going to be out of town for about ninety minutes. So turnaround time is an important consideration. So, and considering all of that, and looking at the number of calls and how often that we had calls back-to-back, if we had, using twenty twenty-one data, so in twenty twenty-one, had we had one dedicated ambulance, that ambulance would have been able to handle sixty-seven percent of the medical calls in the City of Belvidere. So if we had two dedicated ambulances, they would have been able to handle ninety-one percent, or two thousand two hundred and ten of two thousand four hundred and eight calls. So when deciding how many dedicated ambulances, one is pretty obvious, not enough. If we went with one, seven hundred and eighty-nine times, we'd have to ask for help from somebody else. If we had three dedicated ambulances, it would cover ninety-nine percent of the EMS calls. So that third ambulance, though, would only be covering a hundred and sixty calls, and I, once we get prices back, and we send out these RFPs, and we get the information on, well, how much will it cost to have an ambulance dedicated now in this new environment, we're going to see that a hundred and sixty calls isn't going to justify that. That's kind of simplifying the issue a little bit, though, too, because multiple calls require more than one accident. Just the other night, on Thursday night, we had a car accident on Logan and Belvidere, and Thursday night at six fifty-two PM, and that had required three ambulances, and our two engines, because we're blocking traffic, we're also stabilizing patients, we're helping them get out of the car, and then at seven oh four, we had a gas leak. District Two actually handled that because we were unable to take anybody away from the current car accident, but even that gas leak, any type, type of, anytime we're doing some type of specialized response, or hazardous response, or fighting a fire, just like a football game, you have an ambulance on standby for your workers, because there is a chance that they can get hurt as well. So there was an ambulance tied up there, and then at seven thirty, just a few minutes later, in town here, we had a fifty-year-old who was having a severe asthma attack. So within those thirty-eight minutes, we had five ambulances tied up. So you can just see conceptually, sometimes we're going to need help, and for those instances like that, we're going to still ask District Two for an ambulance, or District Three for an ambulance, or Cap and Rescue, or even in this past month, Marengo, or Genoa Kingston, or Loves Park, or North Park. That night, we did actually ask for North Park and Loves Park, and they were already obligated on calls, so it's a pretty complex issue. But going back to two dedicated ambulances handling ninety-one percent of the calls, and then roughly less than two hundred times a year requesting aid, District Two will also reciprocate that. So District Two is in the same situation there, contract is expiring with Elite, and they're trying to determine if they're going to have one or two ambulances passed by referendum. So now, one thing to note is that some of those costs are offset by revenue received in one form or the, or the other. Attorney Drell is going to go into that in a second, but I believe, based on the data and the twenty twenty-one data, that we would require two dedicated ambulances to the City of Belvidere moving forward as we propose this RFP and see what our costs are.
Thank you, Chief.
So obviously, there's the question of how do we provide ambulance service to the community in the most economical fashion possible? We don't know that answer yet, until we solicit proposals from various ambulance companies as to what they were charged to provide that ambulance service. We've met with some already, and, and we know what kind of services and what kind of format we can use to establish a relationship with them, but we don't know the actual costs, and we'd want to have firm numbers from them before we brought them to you. We don't want to shoot from the hip, and then we can compare not only them to each other, but also to the potential costs, because I know some of the people are thinking, why can't our own firefighters provide that service? We can go through that discussion once we have responses to a request for proposal, because then you can compare costs of doing in-house, costs of going with one company A, costs of going with company B, and figure out the most economical method of providing the service. Assuming that you were to contract with a private ambulance company like we have with the OSF Lifeline, because again, you have the option of do nothing, which is not particularly great, bring it in-house, which may not be cost-effective, or contracting with a third party. If you contract with a third party, there is actually two different possibilities, there's more than two, but two main possibilities about how they would structure an agreement with the city to provide that service. In one, I call the traditional method, and that is, they would provide the ambulance a service, they would bill the patients for whatever billing they do, like Lifeline does now, they send a bill to Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance, or what have you, and they would keep that money, and they would undoubtedly require some kind of a stipend or a payment from the city on top of that to make up the difference, because you know that OSF Lifeline is losing, was losing money, and let's face it, these private ambulance companies are not in it to do it for free. They're going to want to make some money. So that would require some kind of payment from the city. That I refer to as the traditional method. It's probably the easiest one for the city to implement, because we simply find out how much our contractual, our contractual amount of subsidy each year is, the budget for it is very, very simple, but it also might be very expensive. We don't know until we get the bids back. The second mechanism by which, and we learned about this actually talking to one of the ambulance companies, is they can provide the service, but the ambulances are actually licensed, even though we don't own them, the ambulances are licensed under the city's licensing, and we would be responsible for all the billing on it. Now, we don't really do the billing, we hire a third party to do the billing, so we're not actually going to hire staff to do billing, but because we do the billing, and those ambulance are licensed to the state under our name, there's the potential that we could receive some grant monies through the federal government via the state to help offset the cost of the ambulance service. So what I'd like to do, if the committee's okay with it, is send out a request for proposals to the regional ambulance providers, asking them to propose a contract for ambulance service, and I'll use the Lifeline contract as the backbone of our, of our relationship, but ask them to propose it two different ways if they can. They can do one or the other, or both. How much would you require in subsidy for the traditional method where you do all the billing? How much are you going to require from the city on an annualized basis to cover the difference? Or alternatively, if the city does the billing, how much are you going to charge the city to provide two ambulances with staff? So for example, if they do, if they do all the billing, they're going to say, well, we can provide the service for a hundred dollars per year, we want to make a twenty percent profit, so we need a hundred and twenty dollars a year, and we know we're going to get fifty dollars in Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement, so city, we need you to come up with seventy dollars a year to pay for that service, and that's going to be the stipend. The non-traditional method is, they know it's going to cost them a hundred dollars a year to run the ambulance, they want a twenty-dollar profit, so they say, city, you just pay us a hundred and twenty dollars a year, you go bill, and whatever you collect, you use to offset your payments. Those are the two scenarios. And I'd like to send the RFP out with both options to see what comes back, so that we can have apples-to-apples comparisons for the City Council and make a decision as to what the most economic way forward is to still provide a good service. Are there any questions?
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So if we went with that second option, so they'd give the cost, but then we'd have to then look for the cost to hire out billing, to include that in kind of the overall picture?
Some of the ambulance providers actually have a billing company, now they're large corporations, so they have one LLC that provides hospital transports, one LLC that does EMS services like what we need, another one that does the billing, and so you have a contract with each one. Typically, most billing companies are between four and five percent as their commission, I guess, for collections, so if you have, you know, a million dollars in billing for that year, and they collect a million dollars, you're going to pay them five percent of that, you get to keep the rest.
Alderman Flurry, one thing I'd like to add is even large transport companies, even like Rockford Fire, they all use different third-party billers, so they, no one really does it in-house, so no matter which model you choose, that cost is going to be built into either, and it's going to be equal.
Frankly, making sure you're HIPAA compliant, dealing with all the coding for the various insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, it's such a specialized field now, there's no way you could do it in-house anyway.
Right, yeah, I wasn't worried about trying to do it in-house, I was just trying to be able to compare apples to apples, so if one says they're billing and this is the price, then we have to hire out the bill, and then we just have to factor that in if we're trying to look at the best deal.
Right.
Anybody else?
So what we're looking for actually tonight is, rather than take this to council next week as a motion, I'd like a show of hands this evening, to see if you're comfortable with us sending out an RFP along those lines, so we can bring the results back to committee in the future. We're thinking sometime in the first or second week of January, have those bids backed by, so we can get it back to you. Have the committee review it before we go to council with any of this, because quite frankly, I don't want to wait till next week to get it, I want to get it out the door as quickly as we can. Yes, we have until April thirtieth, but we have a budget to prepare.
And that's...
And this is going to be a huge impact upon your budget.
And that was the one thing that hadn't been mentioned, talked about yet, is that we do have a budget to prepare for, so we actually weren't, haven't been given a lot of notice, and April thirtieth will be here before we know it. But if we are in agreement that we can go out for proposals, request for proposals, then as a city attorney said, we will bring that back to you as soon as we get them, and hopefully, they will be before that time. I did want to comment on how fortunate the city has been, and it really is a very inopportune time, I guess, for not only myself, but for the aldermen that are all sitting in this room, because we did have quite a great arrangement with Lifeline. They provided services here for quite a long time, and there's no question about it that it wasn't profitable. If it were, they'd still be doing it. They're not, and unfortunately, we have to pick up the pieces and try and put them back together the best we can. It is going to, we are, it is going to cost us money, but I do remember when I was an alderman, receiving a call back in the early nineties from a lady who actually had fallen and broken her hip. had fallen and broken her hip, um, on the sidewalk. And after she had gotten out of the hospital, she had called, her and her family, and they had called me as an alderman. And, uh, they were outraged that, um, she had laid on the sidewalk for 45 minutes before anybody was able to come and transport her. And I agreed with her. I thought that was, um, outrageous as well. I know how I would feel if that were my loved one. And, um, after that, uh, we were able to have, um, Lifeline, uh, did come and they, they did serve the city and they served the city for years. As the chief had mentioned, um, it is going to require, um, we do the best we can if we want to provide a similar service of coverage. And he'd given you the percentage, percentages of, uh, what that would be with one ambulance, two ambulances. And we are in a good spot, as I'd said, with Lifeline because we had backup. They had backup. And, uh, they would move, uh, ambulances into the area as they used them. But we're going to be making some tough decisions coming up. But, uh, how we start on that is, uh, to begin with the request for proposals and then come back. And I'm sure there's questions that you're going to have, that you're going to think of. And, uh, we will try to do the best then when we come back to, um, put our arms around all of the information that we have and come to the best decision we can. However, you know, I don't believe, I think we talked about some of the options. One of them being do nothing. The other one being contract out with, uh, we bill or they bill. And the other one being in-house. By going out for these proposals, we'll be able to get arms around that and come up with the best answer. Affordable answer, put it that way. But I, I do think that, uh, do nothing probably isn't a very palatable idea to me. I don't think that's a good idea. I think, uh, we provide a certain amount of public safety in this community. And, uh, being able to, uh, serve our citizens with care, um, with, uh, emergency care. And a big part of that is to be able to transport them. Uh, as I'd said, the lady back in 93, four, five, whatever it was, um, essentially the fire department responded and they basically, uh, they cared for her as much as they could, but it was raining out and they could hold an umbrella over, but they could not transport. And, uh, there we were and it didn't look good and it certainly didn't feel good. So if we could, uh, come to an agreement that we can at least start by going out and getting these proposals and then we'll come back as soon as we get them, we have to. We have to, uh, come up with a plan as soon as we can. So.
So if I can get a show of hands of those that was support, send a request for proposal for two dedicated ambulances along the lines I discussed. All right.
Okay.
We'll send those out hopefully later this week. And like I said, you probably won't hear much back until middle of January. I know at least one company needed to look at sell months worth of billing to figure out what kind of numbers they could propose. So.
Okay. That's how we'll proceed. And as soon as we get them more information, uh, you'll be the first and all. We'll go from there. Thank you very much. Item B. I would ask to go in executive session to discuss, excuse me, discuss litigation, either pending or imminent pursuing the section 2C11. If I could get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Uh, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ate in favor?
Okay. Thank you.